The plan is now two small bedrooms upstairs with a small bath and a laundry. And the master bedroom suite has been brought to the second floor.
Does that conclude your presentation, sir?
That's, that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I think that was, just looking at my notes from last time, there was a concern about the dormers, there was a concern about some venting and whatnot, and it looks like that's about it. So I'd like to see if any of the board members have any follow-up questions. Member Donato?
Just, just one quick question. The existing siding, was that also clapboard?
Yeah, the existing, excuse me, the existing siding is aluminum, and we suspect that that's going to stay in the areas that we're changing some of the windows and removing some of the windows. There's a consideration that possibly will remove the aluminum siding off of one face, for example, the front porch, or the side facing the, the right side as, and reuse that material for the infill where we're missing or need to fill in, and then replace appropriate material on that new elevation. We're working with a contractor to define how much we actually need to do.
Okay, so in changing each side will be uniform, but some sides could be aluminum, some could be clapboard?
Well, I think, no, it would all be aluminum most likely, and we're looking for the right color to match the existing, but knowing that, for example, the two windows in the front of the, that are being removed, that needs to be the same look, and therefore we may salvage some of the existing to fit it in into that location.
Okay. Okay. That was my only question right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just actually, a couple more questions about the siding and, so for the front elevation where the two windows are being removed?
Yep.
Where do you think the siding would come from?
Well, we're not, we haven't pinned that down. We need to work with the, the builder on that piece, but one of the things that we're recommending is that potentially we could, my recommendation to the client is remove all of the siding on the side porch, the left side of the building, and to salvage that material and reuse that material into the, the body of the house. And then the new siding on the side porch would be a similar aluminum material, hopefully the same color, but it would most likely look a little bit different because it's, it's an old aluminum siding.
Yeah. Do they, is aluminum siding still like pretty available?
It is. We've sourced some good-looking material from Canada, actually.
You know, I guess I just want to point out that the, the side of the house that you're talking about is, is just as present in a sense on the street as the front, since this is a corner lot.
Yep.
So there would be that one unique wall of something that hopefully would be fairly similar.
Well, we, you know, if we took it off the porch, we would do the three sides of the porch, so it stands there as its own element. If we do the side where the garage is, the, the right side of the house, that's another opportunity to work with.
Yeah, that, it looks like the porch, yeah, well, the porch is flush with the back of the house.
It is, it is flush, but it, it, there certainly is a break line that can be created in that position.
Yeah, I, the other thing that's kind of catching my eye as well is on the rear elevation, there are a couple of windows that are being replaced, and then it looks like some oversized trim is being drawn, and so what's the idea there? Is it that a window would be replaced except so as not to patch the siding, there would be some extra trim?
The, the windows on the side are, on the, on the rear of the house are being replaced because the, they're not working with the, the master bath layout.
Yeah.
And we don't have an exact size like that right now for that dimension, so we'll be working again with the builder on that to determine if, you know, if the trim is going to be oversized, or if we need to replace aluminum siding to make the trim consistent with the rest of the house.
Yeah, okay. I, I don't think I have any other questions that, you know, the dormer is, the house itself is very, there, it's very close to the neighbors, I mean, the rear yard, it's the neighbor's driveway, and the house, that's just the nature of the lot, and it really is just more of the siding I was kind of wondering about and questioning. I mean, we've got, you'll also have like the side of the new front dormer and the sides of these dormers, so I understand that all the dormer stuff will be new siding that hopefully will be similar to the existing.
Correct.
If I could just add to that, one of the other options our contractor offered was the possibility of painting the aluminum, so it's uniform throughout.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I don't want to, sometimes you see that like the front of a home might have one treatment.
That's what I'm thinking, like shingles on the front.
Oh, yeah, or...
Or the porch could be all some type of architectural shingle or something like that.
I think, you know, it might be if the front of the house, for example, were the new material, and then the, the rest of it were the patching that you were talking about, but, but again, I'm, I'm kind of, obviously you're in kind of a tight spot, so I'm open to that, or painting is also, I think, a possible option. Thank you.
Member Gannon?
No further comments, Madam Chair.
Member Brenner?
No, no questions or comments, Madam Chair.
I don't have any further questions, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to address the, the board's concerns at the last meeting, and I would just turn to Member Ferris if he has any suggestions on additional conditions that are needed just to ensure that we have some sort of uniformity in regards to the exterior materials. The, the new dorm is a, you know, much more modest and I think tastefully designed, and I think that we need to just make sure that the exterior treatment is, is at that level as well.
I think, so for me, my suggestion, again, I don't, I would suggest if you're going to be trying to kind of patch siding, I would try to pick siding for patching that's from the least visible elevation. So for me, when I stand in front of the house, it's really the side facing the garage.
Okay.
So if you had some opportunity, if you had to kind of mix and match, I would say that would be the wall that you want to do it, because the rear wall, your neighbors are looking at all day, you know, when they come home, and then the other two streets are, are right on the street. So my suggestion is for the patching of the front that you would use material from that side, so at least for the street-facing elevations, you would have like a cohesive treatment. You know, the rear, if you need to oversized trim, et cetera, that's what you need to do, but that would just be my suggestion.
Okay. Would you like that in a condition?
Sure.
So I think, is, is the, can the staff draft something? I think, you know, we want to make sure that obviously what's visible from the street and the back is, is quite a large facade, that those are uniform in nature, and that any augmentation is done on the garage elevation. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that has any follow-up comments regarding this proposal? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing. We did have some materials from last month where the planning board gave us, the planning staff, excuse me, and the planning board gave us a conditional approval. We did continue this last month to seek some additional revisions to the plan, which have been done by the applicant. We have our standard conditions here, and we're adding condition number six relative to the exterior elevations as, as just discussed. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve six Hovey Street with the, for alterations to non-conforming structures with the conditions that we discussed.
There's been a motion made for approval, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case we're going to hear is 22 Priest, sir, come on up, and if you could very quickly just go over the revisions to your plan, you gave us a nice letter here and some updated plans.
Okay, great, thank you. Peter Bemis, Engineering Design Consultants. So when I appeared before the last time, we had some discrepancies between the architectural elevation and the site, so what we did as being surveyors and engineers went back out, and we actually took the field elevations along our frontage so we could determine an average grade, and that's located in the left-hand corner of our, our existing conditions and proposed conditions plan, site plan. Then I had the architect put that same data on his plan, so that as they were going from floor to floor, it would match our site plan, so we had continuity and consistency. The other thing that we added for the site, if I can just focus on that for a moment, was that we had talked about having a enclosure area for our totes. We did confirm with your Department of Public Works what the size was, so we resized them, we moved the location of that, so it was more in keeping with having like, almost like a separate area, designated area, and we have a gate that will open up into a pathway versus being in conflict with potentially a car. I know it's not coming up on your board, but...
We have the site plan, sir.
Okay, good. So that was changed, and then the goal that we had had was to try to lessen the impact to the site, so there was an impervious area located in the southeast corner of the lot, about 180 square feet of pavement, and that probably was there for an old, excuse me, shed, so I spoke with the developer and he agreed that we would remove that. So we've actually been able to reduce the amount of impervious area on the site with this proposal. It's a modest amount, but it's still a reduction versus an increase. And then lastly, there was the issue about the architectural details, so we have greater detailing for all of our elevations, there are overhangs that are properly represented that are in keeping with the existing overhangs, they actually match because we surveyed those into when we were at the site. There was the issue about the bathroom on the third floor being an inappropriate location for a window, we corrected that layout, so that bathroom works now without being in conflict with the shower, and that's it. So I believe I am full compliance, yeah, we're three inches below, but we made sure that we were not, we were below. So I'm hopeful that you could support our proposal, it's a, it's a nice building, we look forward to working on that site. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Open it up to the board members in regards to the revisions, any questions down the side?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Similar consistency with exterior materials with the new addition, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, actually, we're replacing everything, all new windows, new siding, it would be hardy siding. It, it, there's metal siding on it now, and the windows are not appropriate, so all new detailing, but we're trying to keep that same architectural flair for the building. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Member Ferris?
Just a couple of questions, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, I'm just noticing on the elevations, the windows appear to be smaller than what it looks like when I'm standing outside of the house, are you downsizing the windows, or are you replacing them at the same size?
No. Yeah, it would be the same size openings.
Yep, they look like they're just drawn a little bit shorter and all.
I'm sorry. I'm relying on the architect, that's not my field of study, so I made sure that the plans were consistent and matched, and I tried to emphasize making sure the details are there, I, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay.
But we're not trying to downsize them.
It, it really, I don't believe, doesn't impact the exterior, but I don't, I can't kind of make sense of the stairway and plan, the...
I know you raised that at the last meeting, and I asked them to do a section to make sure that it all matched, and...
Well, yeah, you've adjusted it at the top of the stairway, and now what I'm looking at is the, the bottom of the stairway, so the very, the plan, which is A00, like, there, there we go.
From the basement?
Yeah, like what, the bottom of the stairs, it looks like the landing is about a foot, you know, or 18 inches or something. Again, it doesn't really impact the outside, I don't think, but I'm, I was looking at it, and I read plans well, and I couldn't quite...
Too close to the wall, like the, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe it's mislabeled, but I, it didn't quite make sense to me, so I'm hoping that when you get into construction, it's going to be working out.
Yeah, this, this gentleman that's doing this work here, he's, he's very astute, and I'm, I'm confident that he will make it work. I'm sorry for that, again, I tried to go through all these things...
I'm raising it more for, for your benefit.
Okay, I'll actually circle it and bring it to his attention and make sure. Thank you.
And then, you know, from the elevations, I, again, I think they're, they don't, they don't show a lot of detail, so you mentioned it's going to be hardy siding, which I think is, is good.
Yes, I have no problem with you putting that in the decision.
No, I, I guess, again, I'm pointing out to you for your benefit, I don't see, like, the way the elevations have been drawn, I don't see, you know, trim at the corners, which you're probably going to have.
Oh, no, it's going to have corner boards, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, I raised that too, and I'm sorry now that you mentioned it, I, I was so thrilled to get it and see the elevations, because that's what I focused on, that I didn't look at the trim boards. You can put that in the condition too, because I can guarantee you it's going to be there.
You know, I, I myself am just kind of a firm believer that what we look at and approve is what you're going to build, so I just, again, I'm pointing it out for, mostly for, for your benefit. And then last time we got together, I, I believe it was Member Donato that maybe was asking about the, the plan configuration of the, the basement level and that pair of doors, oh, I'm sorry.
I already put my note.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll get to that in a, in a few minutes.
They're still there?
The door is still there, sir, yeah.
Okay. I, I have no problem with that being a condition too, because that was not, the intent was to address that issue.
So we're going to have a short list, the staff is taking notes.
Okay.
And you're going to make all these revisions on the plans prior to getting your decision filed.
Okay.
If this is acted favorably on.
Okay.
So that's, that's it for me, Madam Chair, I think it was just kind of the lack of clarity in the drawings in terms of what the exterior materials were, you know, is there trim, are the windows the same size, et cetera, that, I would, I would say that the, the elevations are, you know, not necessarily reflective of what you're actually going to be building in a, in a detailed sense.
They're kind of bare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they don't show, they show the windows, again, I think they're drawn smaller than the existing, they don't show trim, et cetera.
Ferris?
Thank you.
Member Donato, any questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you for your, your work on trying to work through all these, all these points from the last...
Well, thank you for the opportunity, frankly.
And then I also had some questions about the basement layout, but it sounds like our chair had...
Yeah, because I know you said it, and I specifically mentioned that we had to eliminate it, and I must misread it, because there's no intent here to create any separate space.
Right.
And frankly, and we, from our end, we never thought of it, until it was mentioned, and I'm still disappointed that he didn't make that edit, so...
Anything else, sir? I didn't have any additional questions, just that, again, I had noted the removal of that door in the basement level, and then just recapping Member Ferris's concerns about the landing at the stairs, that, which go, that are in the unit two storage area that go up, and then also to clarify on the elevations, your, your trim and your detail work and those types of things, we want to see all of that.
Okay.
We want to see that on the record plan, sir.
Okay.
So that, you should get with the architect and have him start working on those materials, so those plans can be entered into the, into the record. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from any of the members? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has any follow-up questions or comments about this proposal? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Going into our matters here, again, this is an alteration for special permit finding to alter the non-conforming setbacks, we had a planning board and a, a planning staff and a planning board report that recommended conditional approval, and we didn't have any other matters noted here. We have our boilerplate, excuse me, they've included the boilerplate conditions, we will need to update the drawings in this, and then are you clear on the items that need to be revised on the elevation, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, with that, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, for 22 Priest Road, I motion to approve the special permit as we discussed with the conditions we discussed.
There's been a motion made for approval, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none.
Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, yep, just get those drawings in so we can get the decision filed. Okay. Moving into our new cases this evening, and we will be reading the legal notices for these, the first one is going to be three Belknap Terrace, Mark and Jamie Conti, and we will read the notice, and then you can get started with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark and Jamie Conti, three Belknap Terrace, Watertown, Massachusetts, 02472, request the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a special permit finding in accordance with Watertown zoning ordinance, section 4.06A, non-conforming setbacks to construct a second floor addition within the non-conforming front and rear setbacks, this is located in a T two-family zoning district.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the zoning board, I'm Mark Conti, it's my wife, Jamie Conti. So as you've seen in the plans, our proposal is to basically expand the second story of our home on Belknap Terrace. It's a Cape-style home, right now the, the upstairs consists of two bedrooms, our, our bedroom and our two boys, three and a half and 17 months, share a bedroom. Basically, we're looking to increase the living space for our growing family. The idea is to put a master bedroom and two bedrooms upstairs, along with a bathroom and a master bathroom in the, in the proposed rehab. Our architect Norman Kerlot from Nor Designs in Belmont is, is here and can answer any architectural questions you may have regarding the plans.
Did you want to add anything, sir? Okay. All right, does that conclude your presentation?
It does, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see if the board members have any questions. Member Donato, anything?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Member Ferris?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just was wondering, and wanted to confirm, so are the windows going to be all new, or...
So the, the windows on the first floor will remain untouched, there'll be nine new windows in total on the second floor.
Okay, and you're planning that they're going to match in terms of the exterior finish, et cetera?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And then what about the siding aspect, are you, are you going to keep the first floor siding and then do all-new siding on the second floor?
Yeah, so that's been in discussion with, with our contractors, if we can match the siding, we plan on keeping the first floor and only re-siding the, the new addition on the second floor. Solar fading is a concern, obviously we want the house to look good in the end, so if there's a noticeable difference, we will likely end up re-siding the entire home.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I don't have any other questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Member Gannon?
No comments, Madam Chair.
No comments or questions, Madam Chair.
I don't have any questions either, it seems like a really modest addition to try to get a little extra space, it seems, seems a little tight with a growing family. I do also share though, Member Ferris's concerns about the style of the house, you could split it and get away with it, and maybe do something like a shingle or something on the second floor to try to break it up a little bit, but similar to the comments that you heard earlier this evening, we are concerned about the exterior looking uniform and having some sort of continuity or materials that complement one another. Okay. Anything else from any of the board members? You guys can take a seat, I'm going to open it up to the public, is there anybody here that has any questions or comments about this proposal? Okay, seeing none, I think we can close the hearing and recap the materials we have here. Again, we have a, a planning, planning and, planning staff and planning board report that recommended conditional approval, looking at the conditions here, again, looks like sort of our boilerplate conditions, and I think what we will do is... And I think what we will do is condition number six for just uniformity and complimentary exterior. Give you a little bit of flexibility, but I think you understand sort of what we mean by the comments that we made this evening in regards to the other petitions as well. Is that acceptable to the board members?
Yes, I think it's nicely done.
I do too, I do. I think it's very reasonable, very modest. It's a difficult lot, and they're really just going with, you know, just to get that extra space. I did have one comment on your site plan. It looks like your height is different from your architectural elevations. There's no concern that you're over thirty-five. Your plot plan says twenty-eight point three, and your elevations say just under thirty. So I'd like to have you verify those and make whatever revisions are needed, whether it's on the plot plan. It looks like the elevations, I think, are the correct ones, guessing that the surveyor just did a more layman's calculation.
Good evening, Norman Kerlop, the architect. We made an adjustment, I believe, submitted a new site plan. I wondered whether that one is on file or not.
This one is, this one was received September twentieth. It's dated April sixth.
Yeah, September twentieth. We changed, we tried to make both the same.
Well, they're not.
The initial, they're not still, okay, we'll try to sort out with the running office.
Did you prepare this, sir? Did you prepare this one that has the?
Yes, that is the, yeah.
So I'm guessing this is correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just have the plot plan updated in case you do something in the future. All your documents are consistent, and we have the accurate information.
Thank you.
To add to that, we did have the plot plan updated. I have one signed here, nine-twenty. It may not have made the final submission.
Okay, and does that have the twenty-nine, nine and three-eighths is the height?
It, the, has the, the current elevation is one nineteen point nine eight, and the proposed peak elevation, one twenty-six point oh eight, to match Norman's latest submission.
Can I see that plan, sir?
Yep.
I was looking at the actual... Yeah, it's actually not even on this page, what I was looking at. So what I'm referring to, sir, is right here in this table, where it says, yep, building height, and it says twenty-eight point three.
Yes, okay.
Yep, you can just make sure that's revised.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Anything else from the board? Any motions?
Madam Chair, for, pardon me, three Belpnap Terrace, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit finding with the conditions we discussed.
Been a motion made for approval with the conditions, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. Moving right along. Our next proposal is forty-nine Phillips Street, and Member Ferris will read the notice. And then, I'm guessing, one of you with the applicant, because you're the only folks left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ronald Good II, fifty-five Phillips Street, Watertown, Mass, zero-two-four-seven-two. Request the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit in accordance with Watertown zoning ordinance, section five point zero-one B, pardon me, five point zero-one point one B conversion to allow in addition to and conversion of an existing single-family dwelling to a, into a two-family dwelling. This is located in SC Single Family Conversion Zoning District.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thanks for having me here, and my name's Ron Good, resident of Watertown. I live at fifty-five Phillips Street. And so, the existing house is a single-family house, about eighteen hundred square feet. We're in the special conversion zone, and we're hoping to make it a two-family. The idea behind the design was, it's kind of this farmhouse feel. Let's do something that would be consistent with that and appear really nice. Give both units a usable backyard space, create enough parking. We're not trying to go bonkers with it. So I think it looks great. The, probably one of the bigger concerns is what the neighborhood is like. I don't know if you guys ever go over in that area. There's everything. You've got four families condos, two families, three families. We're right behind the new Elon unit, you know. I'm a landscape contractor, so I used to buy all my stuff from Parole's over there. I saw him after he sold that place, driving around in his new, you know, Range Rover.
Jet.
Yeah. Anyways, so we've experienced all that. Thankfully, I was lucky enough to buy my neighbor's house when she moved, Jen. And so, I think it's a good, it's been a great investment from us. We want it to be a good investment. You've got, is this your first child, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, I got, I got my fifth coming on the way, so I got to pay for college here pretty soon, so I'm hoping to do that with this. So, again, I'm not trying to maximize the space. We designed something I think really fits the neighborhood. It's like historically accurate. I think it looks great. I think it'd be a great addition to Watertown. Add in a nice unit there. We live right next door, so, you know.
You to the south, sir, south-ish, south?
Yes, yeah, one house over.
Southeast, yeah, okay.
So.
Does that conclude your presentation?
That does.
Thank you very much. Let's start down this end. Any questions or comments?
I noticed that the addition is going to be a modular addition. Can you speak to that a little bit? How it'll be delivered, whether there'll be, you know, schedule impacts on neighbors with respect to that?
Yeah, hopefully no impact. We have all the usable space. I mean, I'm the neighbor, and so they can put the crane in the, in my driveway. And so it really shouldn't be too impactful, because they can, they should be able to pull the trailer truck into the yard space and unload it all off-street. Hopefully, that's the plan, and it's a, it's a one-to-two day install, so, because it's not a huge unit. I don't know how many boxes there are going to be, but it's, it's like, it's not that many. It's maybe four or five or something.
That's all the questions I have right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Gannon, anything?
Yeah, I mean, no comments on the petition, just, I don't like to see the loss of open space, but I understand the realities of the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, and we did take that into consideration. I mean, I'm a landscaper. I love my yard space, and so we were, hopefully, created some usable yard space for both units back there, so.
So, yeah, it's certainly within.
It's well within the, it's well under limit, the...
There's open space.
Yeah.
It seems more impactful, I think, than it really is, when you look at the numbers, yeah.
I have no further comments or questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Ferris?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a couple. My questions are really more about this package here. And so I'm, you know, I'm sure the modular builder made that for you. There's just a few questions, having taken a look at the nice house that I just have. So I'm assuming that the front porch is remaining of the existing house that...
Correct.
And then you've got a nice stone wall on the left side of the house, I'm assuming.
That's remaining, yeah.
Stuff too, yeah, okay.
Oh, have you seen that? Have you seen the stone wall?
Yeah, it's nice. Did you do that?
Yeah, we built that one.
It's very nice, yeah. And then, you know, the, the addition, or the second unit, just the way it's depicted, it looks like maybe there's not trim around the windows, but are you intending to do kind of some trim that's similar to your existing house, or?
So the existing house has shutters.
Yeah, I'm not...
I don't really, I'm not too fond of those, so.
I'm not asking for shutters, it's just that, you know, sometimes the way things are drawn, it's drawn as if it's just the window unit put in and the siding butts up to it.
No, yeah, it'll have, they'll all have trim around them.
Okay, all right, and the, the only other, only other question that I had is it's, it's a, for the new addition, the left elevation is a fairly large wall, and there are no windows on the second floor, and that's in the master bedroom, I think, and it seems that that might be kind of a little bit abrupt for the neighbors, you know, and kind of unlike other homes. I'm just wondering if you would be opposed to maybe adding, you know, a single window or something centered in that master bedroom so that it would have not only windows on the front facing the street, but let's say one window facing the side. It just seems a little abrupt.
I'm just trying to get out of here with you guys saying, "Go for it," so, hey, add a window in, not a big deal to me. It does affect the layout of the master, what would be the master bedroom, because it would probably be where the bed goes.
It might be better doing two and spreading the yard.
Yeah, I mean, there, so, so to speak to the view of it, there is a large Norway maple in that backyard that's remaining. The canopy on that tree is pretty grandiose, so it is something that's probably over time going to cover up some of that, that wall, and we'll probably do some nice landscaping there anyways, so.
I think if you did, I mean, it wouldn't need to be centered even as, as we were just discussing. If you added a single window directly opposite the door, for example, then it wouldn't...
No, no problem with that, yeah.
Or if you did two windows that were placed, that one would be on either side of the bed or the bureau or something, however it is. It just seems a little abrupt for the neighbors to look at.
Gotcha.
It's a lot of wall.
Yeah.
It is.
It's a lot of wall.
And you're the neighbor.
And I am the neighbor.
Today, today he's the neighbor.
I know.
So you live on the left side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So it seems a little abrupt for you to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I probably told them to leave it out there so no one would be looking at me in my backyard.
No windows makes good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, that's it for my questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Any questions or comments, Member Donato?
I do have a few, Madam Chair. So it looks like the addition is going to be vinyl siding, and...
Yes. Some fancy color for gray.
For the existing house, white siding, is it also vinyl?
It's white vinyl.
So you're not planning to match the colors, you're planning to?
I, I think contrasting it's going to look a lot better, because it's, I don't know when that white vinyl siding was put on, and, you know, the last gentleman was talking about solar, whatever, I'm sure. We're not going to match white on white. We'd have to redo the whole thing, so. I think contrasting colors, it's, it looks really nice, and it, I mean, just for me, I think it works, so I'd rather not have to re-side the whole house. I like how it breaks up. Even if you guys said, you know, re-side, if we did have to do all-new siding, I think it creates a nice design element, you know, it's set back, it looks a little bit different.
Looks like two townhouses, kind of.
Yeah.
And then I noticed in the planning board note, there was a question about granite curbing, so is, has there been any further discussion about plans to put in curbing, especially now that you're adding that landscape buffer between your home and...
Yeah, so my side of the street doesn't have any curbing, so if the city wants to put that in, I'm all for it.
So just, just to be clear, the, the planning board, what, it came up as a public question, and our staff report suggested that if it's determined during the DPW's, like, planning review to require it, then it has to be installed. Obviously, it's per view of the board to decide what's appropriate. If, if the DPW does not require it, but they look at sidewalk and curbing when there's an, and I don't know in an instance where there's an existing house, if that would trigger their requirements or not.
So can I, can I chime in too, Member Donato, because I think, so are we talking about, because right now it's a seamless driveway. It just goes from one propage to the other, and now there'll be an actual break?
Correct.
With four feet of landscaping. Are we talking about that little four-foot piece?
The, the public comment was curbing on this.
The street has no curbing, so it goes street, city strip, sidewalk, and there's no, there's no curb at all. There's not even an asphalt raise on my side, and I don't, it would look really nice, yeah, it would be great. I don't know if you need to require me to do it.
What are these, these bars that are shown on the survey in front? Are those grass strips?
Can you pull that up?
Because I thought that that was curbing, delineating the double-wide curb cut. These things right here? You can come up, sir.
I don't think I have the newest one up here.
This? I assume that that was some kind of...
Yeah, no, it's not curbing. That's just a city strip. It's just weeds.
Okay, okay. So I think we can just, can either condition or just default to DPW. I was kind of just trying to understand the comment, meaning like, instead of the one huge curb cut, was it now going to be two with some kind of physical delineation in the layout? But it looks like that's not the...
I don't even think there's a concrete apron today, correct? It's, or is it?
There's an apron at the driveway, yeah, but not, the city strip, the city planting strip, it, there's literally no barrier. There's no rise from the street.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate to leave it, the, in the DPW and looking at new or additions, there's a trigger point, and then it's very consistent, and it's the same for all projects.
Member Donato, please continue. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt.
I also wanted to ask you, in addition to the left side elevation, I'm glad Member Ferris mentioned adding a window to that. I'm wondering if there's a way to try to add something as well to the right elevation, too?
Yeah, we left that solid, because it is the second unit's egress into their backyard. And so I think there's, there's like a bathroom there, which we want to put the window, that has the window going into the backyard. I mean, we could, we could do it there as well, and the, so.
I was looking more on the...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. We can, I'm, I'm fine with that and a window in there. I think it's two bedrooms up top.
Yeah.
And that's the top-right bedroom, we could put in another window.
Are you referring to the right elevation?
Yes.
Okay. So the right elevation on the second floor is, yeah.
Two-bedroom number two.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah, great.
And then, do you have plans for what's going to go in the new landscape buffer?
I don't, I don't have any drawings done.
I'm happy to see that going in. That'll be nice, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I have, I have some questions about the modular delivery as well. In terms of how many trucks, I think you had mentioned earlier, you're anticipating maybe four?
Right.
Blocks coming in, so how many trucks will you need for that?
Oh, so they have like the one crane truck, and that could be parked in our driveway off-street. And then, I think it's, however many boxes it takes for them to bring, and I think, I believe it's four, is how many trucks will come in, they'll unload it, and they'll drive off. And I, it, it shouldn't be, like, we might have to get a sidewalk closing or something like that, but they're not, it's not going to take, it's not going to close down the street, even if they can't pull into our, into that yard space right there.
We did have one other modular installation, but it was on a very, very tight, it was in the Cottage Road neighborhood, and they had a lot more difficulty, but they, the, the right-ofways are twenty feet there, no sidewalks. I assume you'll have this foundation poured first, and it's ready to go, and they basically are drop, bringing it and dropping it onto the foundation.
Yeah, it's like a one-day unload, and that's it.
And so there's no concern about the trucks getting onto the street? Will there be a police detail or anything, bring them off the highway?
He's, he'll be required to coordinate that with the DPW or indoor police, whatever's required as part of that, as part of that delivery phase.
And then, in terms of timing of delivery, so they're coming from New York, they're, they're going to come directly here in the same day or within a span of two days?
So I, I have to find off-site storage for them, um, until they're ready to do the actual install. So, it won't be in Watertown, probably.
Okay, and so the off-site storage will be somewhere local so that when they're coming, they're hopefully, I mean, might wanna consider conditions about the timing of the delivery, just to make sure that it's, you know, not during rush hour, or peak travel time.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be in the morning, and they'll be, like, I, I'm happy to wait till nine or ten, or whatever, it's not, I don't think that's a big deal.
That's all, that's all my questions, Madam Chair.
I have to speak more to, so I've, I have storage, I have a yard space in Needham, and so like, I might end up storing them there, so it's like twenty-minute drive from Needham to my house to unload them.
For the, there was a multifamily modular that was taking place, um, in Newton, and they were using some space on Pleasant Street, um.
Yeah, they had like fifty boxes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so I don't, I don't, again, it seems like there might be some different opportunities that you might pursue.
Yeah.
One caution, speak with the zoning enforcement folks in Needham, as to-
If I can put it there, yeah.
Yeah.
I try to stay out of their hair.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any of the board members? Um, I have a few comments, um, and I feel like these drawings are kinda just to show the addition and don't really, you know, they show a front door with no stairs and things like that, so are you gonna be redoing, um, the porch in the front as well?
On the existing house?
Yes.
I was not planning on it.
Um, okay, I, I think those porches should match.
Okay.
Um, just because, just to try to have, I understand, you know, you've got the second unit in the back, um, it's kind of a different design, I think having a different color is probably okay. I would maybe lighten it up a little bit, you don't want too much dark, so maybe bring up the hue. Um, and my question about the back porch is, it, it's really not gonna look like that, is it, with the posts and, uh, exposed supports and things, or what, what's the?
The, the back stairs?
Uh, no, the, well, there's, there's sort of this, this, this porch here.
Right, 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 yeah.
And then the one over here, I, those should, those should match.
Yes, I, I understand that, I'm, I think that's a good point.
And then my, my question was this, this underneath part.
Yeah, that'll, it'll probably have lattice and that'll all be landscaped up, yeah.
Okay.
Is this what the modular company is delivering? You have to add the features that?
Right.
Yeah, that, that's like the carpentry type stuff, yeah. I mean, I don't, the porch, they don't deliver, the porch is built, correct?
The porch will be, have to be built onsite, yeah.
Right, okay. Um, yeah, so just to try to have the two porches match, I think we'll kind of tie the structure in
Yeah.
uh, together a little better, um, so that it's not really, oh, they just took two houses and infused them together, so. Um, we wanted to look nice, um, be productive for you, for you as well. Just a point of, of information, I had spoken to Gideon earlier about the question related to front yard parking, because the driveway now is, is, is to the side of the dwelling with the construction of the new unit to the rear, this driveway will now be, uh, in front of the structure, and he explained to me that when, um, they're doing these sort of rare additions, that they don't consider this front yard like they would in front of a house. Um, and that, and it, as I was looking at this, I, I couldn't pinpoint where, but I know we have similar situations in town, uh, and zoning enforcement has, has consistently applied that, and has applied that here, um, as well. I do, you're a landscaper, so you're not showing anything in that buffer, it better look really nice.
It will look really, if you saw my house seven years ago and compared to today, it's, it, it'll look really nice.
Okay, uh, with plantings and, and different things in there, not just grass, okay. Um, and just going over the notes here, uh, there was some, uh, just noted in the master, adding one to two bedrooms. Bedroom number two, uh, excuse me, one to two windows in the master, uh, Member Donato mentioned bedroom number two, also uh, one to two windows at your discretion, what works for layouts and, and different things like that. Um, the deliveries, can you live with ten to three?
I mean, if that, the more I can, I mean, I have to do whatever you say, but I'm not the modular guy, so he might say ten, you know, that's, we want to get there at seven.
Madam Chair, um, with the, uh, the one on Pleasant Street, there was some flexibility so that it could be coordinated and approved by the Watertown Police Department and DPW, so if there was a, say there was a window and they had to get it delivered, it was like from six to eight, or, you know, there were some different timeframes where they, uh, in order to get it from one place to another on certain roads, um, there was limitations, um, if it's going through Newton, there's limitations on certain roads, and so you start to have more and more windows, so. So as long as there's some flexibility so that the officials in the town, if they feel that it's appropriate to allow it to come through the Watertowns roads at a different time.
For the detail or something like that, okay. All right, so we'll say that the preferred delivery times, um, are ten A, ten, ten AM to three PM, um, with discretion of public safety authorities and whatever community, I, I mean, I don't care what time you're going through Newton, frankly, but, you know, we only have jurisdiction here in Watertown, so, um, yeah, if you say, you know, my guy's gotta come at six AM, and there's a school bus stop three houses up, you know, call the police department and just make sure that, you know, the delivery is done adequately and safely. Well, to the, to the board, okay.
It's actually a pretty quick process.
Yeah, yeah.
Been involved in two of them.
Um, uh, the comment about the siding, you know, maybe lighten it up a little bit, and, um, the, the construction of both those porches um, should match and be identical, same stairs, same railing, steps, all of that stuff. Okay. Um, any other questions or comments from anybody?
Madam Chair, just the, um, our comments about the windows, you know, for the master bedroom, I would just suggest that if the applicant wants to use smaller windows versus larger, you know, that that's, that would be acceptable, it's just, it's just that upper wall
Something to break it up, yeah.
But if you're concerned about bed placement or something, and wanted to do one deeper, or two shallower, or two deeper, would
Okay.
Thank you.
We're just looking for a little bit more.
Just more breaks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that has any questions or comments? Please come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chair and, and zoning board. Um, my name's Lisa Feltner, I'm a District B counselor, and I also happen to live in the neighborhood. Um, and appreciate all your comments tonight on, uh, and suggestions on the exterior, um, look, and I've received them, similar feedback, wondering about windows, there's a beautiful yard there, and, and just interactivity with the neighbors. It's good also hear about the deliveries, I'm, with Phillips Street not being a through street, I'm kind of assuming I could be wrong, that trucks would be backing up, um, after deliveries and things, so we appreciate you ideally eliminate it till after seven AM, but you know, that'll be worked out with public safety and police. There were also questions about adding granite curb, um, be, because of it being a new construction, but I understand it is also an addition to an existing house, I know in Moore Street is brand-new, or other places, um, so I don't know, maybe I should talk to staff so I could help the constituents be better informed about when, um, granite might be required, uh, by the petitioner. Uh, and sidewalk crossing issues. And the, I think the last comment was about the front yard parking, there's a lot of confusion, uh, in town about front yard, and if you look at our driveway regulations and how front yard is defined, it says must have clear path to the public way from, from the house, and this is a separate, uh, entrance to this new house, so, um, the neighbors aren't upset or against the building, but they're confused about public safety and access to the front of that, uh, side additional property. So I don't know if, I know Mr. Mina's not here tonight, if that can be cleared, um, because as you probably know, other properties are getting ticketed and explained, you have to have at least three fe, feet clearance, you know, width clearance to that. So again, um, I'm happy to meet with staff myself to help inform the staff, so I, I just don't, I mean, constituents, I don't know if you could speak anymore to that as far as any concerns, if there was a fire, ambulance, et cetera, just my understanding is the front yard parking regulations are due to public safety, so, um, otherwise, thank you very much.
Can you just clarify the, the three feet, you just said you need to have three feet clear, what, what does that mean?
Uh, well, as you know, the, there's a lot of old pavement that's gone across, you know, the entire properties, and zoning has said that, well, if you can get the three feet width to the entrance of a property and park on each side, but you have to have a three-foot width clearance from the public way to a front door, otherwise it's front yard parking, so that's some of the confusion. I mean, I know the additions at the back of the house, but because of where the parking is.
I can, I could speak briefly to that.
Yeah, I, I have heard of this before.
This is a code enforcement situation, so in the instance of a, um, in, in some instances, there's a driveway, and then there's a walkway, but it's a continuous, uh, flush asphalt, and so then the cars park on it and block the front entrance of a house.
I got you.
And so therefore, they are, have blocked the, the egress from the front door of the house. And so that's, it's a reference to that in the front yard, um, oftentimes, those are also only, you know, ten or fifteen feet in depth, the front yard, so the cars are parked on that on that walkway, um, and that's the three-foot clear path that needs to be maintained on the front of a house.
Right, so there's not a walkway identified here as why, but I, I also appreciate your comments on explaining the visuals, because people are confused about the existing house, and if that porch was gonna change or not as well, and where the entrance, you know, egress and entrances defined and regulated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we do not have any dimensions of the, what is the proposed width of the driveway? Can you come back up, sir? So the, the curb opening is twenty-two, right?
Uh, I put in a condition that specified it, but I haven't seen the plot plan, that you just submitted that, right?
So from the, from the, uh, edge of the landscape buffer, sir, over to the retaining wall?
Is tw, that's twenty-two feet.
That's twenty-two feet, okay, so.
And I don't know what, whatever the opening is.
Right, so i, if that's twenty-two feet, and what's the depth, sir?
I think it's forty-one feet.
Which is the required depth for new parking?
Well, he's, let, yeah, that, this is the condition, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying what's actually shown here, um.
That, that is, so that's what we put in.
And that, okay, so what's shown on your, your survey plan is twenty-two by forty-one? Okay, so the twenty-two wide, if the cars are parked on either side, there's more than, there's three feet in the middle, more, more than enough.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because the required parking space only is eight and a half feet.
Right, so is there any way for you, sir, to have a change in treatment on the driveway? Can you put something in the middle that, that is either con, I, I'm assuming you're doing an asphalt driveway?
Right.
Can you put a concrete strip up the middle, or can you stamp it, or can you?
So two, two things, ideally, what I would do is that four-foot landscape buffer, buffer, as a landscaper, I'd rather do that in grass, solely because when you're plowing driveways, you're putting snow, and typically plants kind of get shredded along that, so we could do that, and it's, continue to landscape in other areas. Or we could, the, the paver walkway that's at the end of the driveway, we could just follow that all the way down to the, to the sidewalk and delineate.
Because the, the, the paver walkway is not in the middle of the driveway, so that, that's, that's gonna impede your parking. So, um, we need to have something vertical in the buffer to, to remove that sort of seamless, the, the horizontal, you know, to take away from sort of that seamlessness, just, just the gra, you know, plant something there.
Oh, in the buffer, yeah.
In the four-foot buffer, you said you wanted to just do grass, I mean, you push the snow back, you've got plenty of room for snow.
Could he also, he could also do like a six-inch, um, curb, if you wanted to do with grass in that? That would create that same, if, if he didn't want to do planting in that area, would that be acceptable?
No, I want vertical planting in that area. Um, so back to what I was suggesting, so you have twenty-two feet of width, if you did, you know, nine and a half, and nine and a half, and then in the middle, you did either a paver, or you stamped the asphalt, so that clearly delineates, you know, then people get out, they can walk in the middle, and they can make their way up to, um, the paver walkway. What I'd also like you to do, it's, it might increase the lot coverage a little bit. I want you to extend the paver walkway over, so if I'm in the back unit, I come out the door, I come down the stairs, and once I get on that walkway, I have a continuous clear path to the street.
Great.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a question that, so would, would, uh, this portion of the driveway just then run to meet the front alongside the stone wall, rather than this bit of an arc that's there?
I don't know why the arc is there.
Because there's a gorgeous, you know, weeping cherry there.
Okay.
Okay. But I think, I think the, I think it's, I think it's more than twenty-two, because if you put a condition that said the curb opening can only be twenty-two.
Then the driveway has to be wider than that.
Right.
I'm not a, yeah, we can, I got a rule.
Do you have a scale?
We can, we can estimate it maybe.
So it's one to ten?
Yeah.
Um, one inch equals ten feet, let me just see if this is actually, this drawing. This drawing's not scalable.
Oh, I've got a, I've got a.
So the front says it's sixty, and it scales as forty.
Like a bigger one? Uh, this one maybe, this one's bigger.
This is to scale, okay. So, the driveway is... Yeah, it's, it's twenty-two. The opening is less, so.
Which is fine.
The open, yeah, you don't, it can go max twenty-two, it doesn't need to be.
I know, but we, the, we wanna make sure that
The walkway.
The walkway, so the driveway will come straight down, oh, then are you gonna lose that tree?
So, another option would be to have the walkway tie into the front of the house.
Headlines read, Watertown zoning board cuts down trees.
Gideon, what did you say, the walkway to what?
The, the walkway could run along the side of the driveway to the front of the house, and then it's a shared walkway to the street, so it's a single walkway.
You just want some type of delineation that it, that, so people are like, don't park on this.
Well, it's also, no, it's a clear path from the sidewalk to your front door. How are you walking from the street when visitors come?
I mean, I, I'd rather have it in the middle, if there's a fire and the thing, the house is blazing, we don't want really people like up against, up against, um.
If I'm, if I'm scaling correctly, Madam Chair, and it looks like, uh, so if an inch equals ten feet, then this is twenty, this is about, uh, let's say twenty-eight feet from this point to this point. And for a car depth, are we usually using eighteen feet or something like that?
Like sixteen?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know where the tree is, so he would have to, I mean, he would have to just, it might have to shift over and come.
It's a, it's a pretty wall with nice landscaping, you know, it's, um.
Can I ask for clarification on what, what?
You can come up here if you want, sir, I'm just gonna pull up an aerial, 'cause I just need to. Well, we don't know. We don't know.
The intent is to try to get some type of walkway pattern that separates the two banks of parking.
So just say this is, maybe, because what's the width on a?
You don't have, you don't have enough trace in your bag, do you?
A what?
Trace paper, you don't.
No.
Okay, I'm just gonna be drawing on this.
So if it's eight and a half or nine for the opening of a, the standard parking space, what is it? It's eight, it's eight, okay, so eight, and eight is sixteen, and that gives us five feet of open space in the middle, and if you, if we just center it, and part of that leads to at least the landing area, that gives you the straight shot from the sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying, and I'm saying if you have to expand this a little bit, then do that.
Yeah, so why don't we just do that?
Yeah, the only thing I don't wanna happen is that the car that's parked here is parked on the walkway, and that's why I was saying to.
I mean, I could, we could finagle this over in a little bit, I mean, the tree's probably right there. So, I mean, this is, this was not measured, I didn't measure this off.
I'm just gonna make a suggestion here, if the, if the width that we have is twenty-two feet, and if we were to say that eight feet over from this edge, you would establish the sidewalk, then that still gives you the ability to do even, so eight and eight is sixteen, you still have six feet left. So you would potentially have a six-foot wide path, which I don't think you need, you could do eight feet.
And eight's like, eight is like at a mall, more than eight, up against a wall especially.
Well, you could do, my suggestion is that we would do nine feet, and then four feet is thirteen, right? And that would leave.
And then it's from here to here, what, what, that opening is, that's what you're concerned about, if a car's parked right here, and then another one's right there, there's no, let's just rip the tree out.
If you look at the aerial, isn't that the accurate wall now, isn't that, so there's a tree in the wall? So you see how those cars are pulled, I mean, they're, they're way beyond the.
That's the cherry tree.
The four-foot line?
Yeah.
So if you push all the cars to the four-foot buffer side, then the walkway would just go up against the wall?
When we drew the driveway, it was designed spec, we weren't onsite measuring, so I'm not sure exactly how much space the trunk of the tree is off of the, off of the wall.
I think if you push the cars towards the property onsite, you're gonna have the three-foot walkway, no problem.
Do you have the existing conditions planned?
Um, I don't know, is that existing conditions?
Oh, here it is, okay, here's the baton list, okay, that is the existing.
He says a copy of picture.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm a plan person.
I, I think that we could possibly get the twenty-two feet in, I just like that design, I like the curve, and it opens up, it feels kinda nice, but if you wanna square it off, I think, I I'm pretty sure we could do that.
Without harming the tree.
Yeah, okay, you gotta look at the, I know you don't like, like, oh, sorry. So, that, that tree is, we can move the driveway, we can get your, we can make that straight. Without damaging the tree.
All right.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, you want your scale back?
That's a nice one, too.
Could try again.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions or comments? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing. We have our planning staff and planning board report that recommended favorable action with our boilerplate conditions, and, bless you, and then a, a condition about the driveway. We discussed the windows in bedroom number two and in the master, adding those in flexibility and the, the size of those to meet the needs of the interior space. Excuse me, we talked about the siding, we talked about the deliveries, and obviously exceptions with local public safety officials. Both porches are gonna match, and then you're going to have some sort of transition in material in the driveway, so that it's clear that there's a walkway that comes down the middle, and if you have to extend those pavers to make sure that that all lines up, there's, there's, there's plenty of room in the lot coverage. So you need to update this plan, the survey plan, and update the coverages and all those figures, and, and submit that to the staff, and that the landscape buffer has to have something vertical.
And how wide is that, that sidewalk area?
I think three feet is fine, yeah.
Down the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna go wider, you can, you know, it, that's fine. Okay, anything else? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve forty-nine Phillips Street for the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family with the conditions that we discussed.
There's been a motion made for approval with the conditions that we discussed this evening, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So again, just to note, we did withdraw nineteen Loomis Ave, and we formally continued one oh one to one oh three Moore Street to the October twenty-third agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.